March 19, 2020, it is 6:30 PM. Call to order.
Let the director stand, all members are present.
We can do that. Turn of our heads for prayer, please. Do whatever divinity that you pray to. Please consider praying to them. For we are the state of our country and of the world. And the people that we're in. Come on. Let us stand, please, for the first reasons. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible. We have one citizens communication. Darling, you probably know all the rules to go with it.
Yes, sir, thank you, I know the rules. I'm Darlene Walsh, I heard that one, zero, zero, one, no free drive, Salado. I noticed, um, Jenny and I, you're talking about refunding debt. Now, maybe that means refinancing debt. I assume, maybe not, maybe something else. But I do, I do think back when we first discussed the bond, passing the bond to pay for the sewer, that it was told to voters that, that we were asking them to borrow this, these 10.5, $5 million to connect the business district to sewage system to help us, to help the town grow. And that when we got the sewage system, we would have more and more businesses connect to it. And that that would help keep down the, the property taxes for them. Well, looking back, we haven't really connected all of the business district to town. We, we haven't connected the Brooks writers, or the strip center, or the library. We haven't connected the Sonic, who, all these people want connections. They want to connect, I've talked to them. Now, I'm not sure about the library, but I have talked to the others. And the Sonic, Country Boys. And of course, there were the folks out of town that wanted to connect too, such as the man who owns the Aquish up there at 2484 and 35. And, and he was willing to pay to connect to our sewage line at his expense. And then all those properties along there would have the ability to come into our sewage system and, and help pay off this debt. Same thing for the Holiday Inn and, and the other hotel up there at 2484 on the east side of 35. They desperate, I know Sonny, I've talked to him, desperately wanted to connect. And they both do. And, and, and so it seems like we could find some way to do that. Because we need that income to help pay this debt off. I just hope that we look at, we truly, really, truly try to find a way to get all those people connected. Especially the ones in town that we, we told our voters we were gonna do that for. We were gonna connect the businesses in town. And we have a number of businesses in town who want it and aren't connected. So I hope we, we think about, truly look for a way to get those folks connected to help pay off this debt center. And, and refinancing, yeah, I'm all for refinancing, I've been studying refinancing all week long for some other properties. But, and so, yes, you should, you should look at that. But also think about those other properties. Because those two hotels up there on the north side have a value of over $7 million. That's what they're appraised at. That's a lot of property tax. And when you add the Sonic and the, and Country Boy and, and some of these other businesses, I mean, I think, you gotta spend money to make money, okay? That's always been my philosophy in real estate. You gotta spend money to make money, and it works, believe me, I know. Thank you very much for your time.
Number two, the concerned agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular Board of Alderman meeting of March 5, 2020. Approval of the February 2020 financial statements for the village of Salado. Now, three to motion, please.
I think we'll bring the consented in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded all in favor. Ah, discussion, please. Question has been followed, all in favor. Passes. Don, this is where you have to move.
Mayor, we would like, we'd like to ask you to move addendum four F. Addendum four F to the point so we can get our two guests out here tonight. They're here to present basically a brief briefing, school of repetition, a brief briefing relating to status of our wastewater debt and the potential opportunities for refunding that debt at this point. If you do not know, the Sir Bond counsel, Jerry Kyle, Chris Lanes, our FA, our financial advisor. Chris, why don't you tell them where we're at right now with the crazy market?
Okay, every, um, everybody knows what's been going on in the market, everything really hit the fan in the last couple of weeks. So, interest rates have dropped, but they're heading back up this week. What we would like to do, I've talked to several of the banks, and the muni side of the business is different for bank buying than it is on the municipal trading side. The banks are buying for their own account, they're not buying to resell, so they don't have to build a profit in there, they're buying it for their own account. And as you know, the treasury has dropped the Fed funds rate, so their, the banks' cost of funds have been lowered. So their rates accordingly have dropped. Given where the banks, and some of the larger banks are telling me where they're bidding things, and they are still bidding, some of the banks have pulled back because it's been a crazy week and trying to decide what they want to do. We've looked at a higher rate than the rates that they were giving me, like as of Friday and Monday. And doing, assuming that a 2% interest rate, we look, it looks like we should be able to save the city about $45,000 a year in your payment. And over time, about $600,000 to $700,000, or almost just under 6% present value savings using that higher interest rate. The rule of thumb is that you need to have a 3% interest rate, a 3% present value savings to consider it a viable deal. And that includes the all-in cost, all of your costs to do the refinancing. You don't extend the debt, you cannot extend the debt. That's a restructuring, this is just a refinancing. So, what we're looking at and we're asking is to, at the April meeting, we'll bring back to you what is called a parameters resolution, or ordinance, for the city to adopt. And in that resolution, you appoint the city manager, the deciding person if the rates are within the parameters that we set for making conditions on doing a refinancing. And I'll let Jerry talk about the legal part of that. But this gives, this gives you some flexibility, so when it, when the rates drop, is it so crazy right now, then we can ask for bids and lock that rate in at that time without having to have another meeting. We would definitely come back at the next meeting and bring all those documents or all that information to you. But we wouldn't do it unless it was advantageous to you, that's the only reason we're doing that. I'm doing it for several clients, for several other clients that have the opportunity to save, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's why we're looking at it. Jerry, you want to explain the legal part?
Sure. The mayor, Mr. Ferguson, the parameters ordinance that Ms. Lang was describing is, is a mechanism that allows the councilman, the council to authorize a refunding, a refinancing subject to certain minimum parameters. And really, the primary parameter here is savings. And so typically, the threshold is around 3% present value savings. And what that allows Chris and her team to do is after you authorize the ordinance, then she can go out and start to market the bonds. And she pointed out that the market's been kind of volatile lately. So it allows a little flexibility in terms of deciding, you know, what day to actually pull the trigger and, and sell the bonds. There's delegation to the village administrator, authorizing him to execute the purchase contract with the, the purchaser of the bonds. And then from that point forward, it really kind of becomes a very standard transaction. We would take the documents to the attorney general's office for review approval, and then move on to closing several weeks later. So that's kind of in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We would be back before you though with a document at the next meeting that would establish the parameters. Happy to answer any questions today or at that time.
Questions, please? I have a question for you. Is there a process in feet for this?
So, all of the expenses, the cost of issuance are paying, the savings is net of any, any cost of issuance. So, Chris would be able to provide, you know, the cost of issuance for the transaction? Maybe that's possible.
So how much do you think that cost would be? Any idea?
Um, we've got, right now, and we haven't, we haven't just ballparked.
You're right.
About $130,000, $40,000, $140,000. And the, the savings is net of all of that. The PD savings is net of all of that, that's included in what the net is. And right now, when we ran it, we had a 5.94% savings, so that's double the threshold.
And I guess one question that probably is that, there also is, are there any limitations on how many times you can refund?
When we, when we do this again, we can either...
So this will be a current funding?
Yeah, this is a current refunding, so we're not, we're not, it's currently callable.
Right.
What we can do again is either put a call date in there, one year or five years, or whatever we want to put in there. If you get, you know, and what we might do, and what we usually do is we also add in there, if they want to bid it another way, if they want to bid it with an alternate call date, like some of them may bid a lower interest rate, they can make it non-callable. Now, if somebody's gonna bid it and give you a lock you in at one and a quarter, non-callable, you know, that's like free money. So I would say, do that. But, you know, that is your call, and when we, or your call when you do a parameter sale. So when we do that, I like to put an alternate, I like to have an alternate in there. I can give them a call date option and then let them build an alternate. Because some of them, they just want to know they've got it for that period of time. So when rates are that low, sometimes it just makes sense to, you know, take the lowest interest rate and move on. But we'll note that on the day of the sale. And usually that's what I typically do, I put a call date in here and then I let them bid an alternate.
Talk to them about the timeline of, should they approve the parameters in two weeks? How, how fast would we anticipate moving?
Well, it depends on what the market does. And when I do, what my job is, is to keep in contact with those banks, and I'm doing a lot of these right now. So I'm talking to them daily, to see when it looks like there's a good time to get in the market and when we want to sit that, send that bid out. We would do a limited offering memorandum, which is affectionately termed the big boy letter. Because you can only, only banks or sophisticated investors can buy this, there's not a multiple number of investors that are buying this. Mom and pops can't buy this. So we would just look at the market, we have a bid form out there, just like we did the last time, I've already worked that out, and we'll just change the dates accordingly. And some of the banks, like the bigger banks, need five to seven days. And when it's crazy like this, they really need the seven days. Some of the, the more local or moderately sized banks don't need as much time. And then some of them, like one of my best bidders is not bidding right now because it's too volatile this week. And, and they just went through a merger, so it's, you know. But there are plenty of banks out there, so.
So what would be the target rate you're gonna go at?
Uh, 2% or over. I mean, it could be a little bit over 2%. One's 319, the 2018 was 319, and the 2015 was 294. One is right under 3%, and one's right over 3%.
So what would be the target rate you're gonna go at?
Uh, 2% or over. I mean, it could be a little bit over 2%. One's 319, the 2018 was 319, and the 2015 was 294.
So what is the rate at which we get the threshold that we come to this?
It's less than, it's a little over 2, it's over 2%. Somewhere over 2%.
210, 240?
Uh, I, to, run it to, you know, I just ran 2%. I've got a numbers guy that runs the refunding numbers. So we're doubled, at 2%, we get almost 6% savings. So, two and a half, maybe?
And, and...
And we can put that in the parameters when we...
Right.
Next month, when we run that back.
Right. Is this using a bank qualified rate, or is this just our regular rate?
This is a bank qualified rate. And, like, do you anticipate giving any? No. So it is under 10 million.
Right. So we're not expecting, we didn't, we didn't use, let me do rate for our, at least during that, during the, any, any of that.
Other questions, please?
And will the, will the term remain the same for the...
Yes. Yeah, the term remains the same.
What if we wanted to extend it?
That's a re-structural. And that, that costs you.
Does it cost you just $140,000?
No, I mean, you're not gonna lower your interest rate, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna be extending your interest, so, you know, legally...
You'll be extending the term, so...
We're not extending the term.
I'm saying that in his...
You're extending the term.
If you're extending the term, you're gonna extend the rate.
Your cost, yeah, your interest cost over time, because you're paying longer.
Well, I think you pay a higher rate, too.
Yeah, you're gonna pay a higher rate, because then, then people are wanting, wanting to know, why are you extending it?
My thing goes back to that meeting, that workshop we had that one day when we looked at extending that, it ended up being a significant increase.
Yeah, here we're lowering the month, we're lowering the annual payment doing this. But yeah, you were extending it, you're increasing the rate.
Plus your buyers.
Plus your buyers are gonna totally change. Because everybody's gonna want to know, why are you doing that?
And then how is the $140,000 calculated? Is that just a set fee, or is that your time and travel?
It's his fee, my fee, the verification agent fee, the analytic part of the equation fee, everything. And actually, I'm gonna put that in my fee, I'm gonna put that in my fee. So we're trying to... Yeah, the AG's fee as well, there's an agent fee that they have to stage too. So we, it's, and again, those costs are net of the savings.
So if we do get the terms that we're looking for, we'll save that, $600,000?
More than, but that, it's actually came in at like $671,000.
$700,000.
Yeah, just under 700, and, you know, it was a lot more than that given where they were Chase close to deal last week. But, like I said...
5%.
Yeah, that's a six, yeah, almost 6% PD savings.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, if I, just for my implication, the mom and pop, I, I mean, what's, what's a, what's a bank at which you get a threshold that you're probably not gonna solicit that?
Well, I have, I have one of the banks that bids these, and if there's a local bank or your depository bank that wants to participate in the transaction, he will do the transaction and allow them to hold some of the bonds if they want to do that. But typically, it's the, the BBMTs, the first, you know, Bank of Texas, American Bank, American National Bank, you know, BDDA, Chase, those, those are the banks. You know, I've got a whole laundry list of them. And some are in and some are out of the market, you know, it's kind of a cyclical thing, depends on how much money they have.
Yeah, I'm trying to decide whether we are...
Oh, okay. And which bank, which bank do you work?
First National Texas.
First National?
Texas.
Texas, oh, okay.
Can you get us better rates over there, honey?
Uh, I'll be probably firing out at this discussion at some point, so.
Who's your top priority bank right now?
Horizon.
Horizon, okay.
So, so if we, we'd like to do this, and then we want to stay the uncertainty for a period of time, what are the odds of us coming out worse than we are now?
We're not gonna do it if it's worse, we won't do it at all. Yeah, you know, you would not...
Basically, what we're doing is we're setting the window. And, and we're looking at the window, we're gonna maximize our savings in the window, and if we can't do it, we don't do it.
Yeah, if we don't get a rate, and we don't do it, they don't get paid.
Yeah, we don't, we just don't do it. Yeah, we're not charging anything if it doesn't get done. We did, we, we do this for all of our clients. So we keep an eye on the market, and if it looks like it's a doable deal, and then we do that, if it's currently callable. Some, some debt, now you can't do an advanced refunding, so it has to be currently callable in your bonds arm.
Other questions, please? I have one question for you, the $600,000, is that before or after the $140,000?
After.
Any other questions? I'll be taking motion, please.
There's no action to be taken, Mayor, we're gonna be coming back to you in a second with the ordinance, we ought to consider taking action.
Okay. Salido, can that be the first, the first meeting you made for?
Yes, sir. That'll be at the second.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're hoping it'll be at the second.
Can you, you're up first?
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of the board, the public are here tonight. Now, first of all, I want to stress to everybody, just the board concluded that we need to practice social distancing here, it's just as important, we've got the chairs set up to do so, so up here at the guys, if you can pull back unless you need to talk into the microphone and try to separate yourselves, we need to practice what we preach in that sense, and that's good. First of all, status report on the wastewater project, the work continues to connect the 26 unconnected properties in the initial wastewater service area that pulled permits and paid their customer deposits by February deadline. We're in the process of contacting the owners of the three unconnected properties that failed to pull the permits, and those property owners will be taken to court if no movement occurs. So far, we've got some movement, two of those three, we're waiting for the third. Crews have prepared yet another sewer main break stemming from construction relating to the Main Street improvement project, that of course, at the cost of the Texas contractor. Wastewater customers are reminded to avoid flushing wipes with disinfectant. We're seeing a lot of that right now in our system. Obviously, that taxes the system, not taxes as you would think of taxes, but it creates havoc with the system and the processing, so try to avoid that also if you're on septic, it's not good for your septic system also. Status report on the Main Street project, the contractor continues before sections occur, gutter and sidewalk at different locations on Main Street. Drilling for the faces of the decorative light fixtures is underway, about 96 of those light fixtures will be going in in the coming weeks. Crews are working on the driveway aprons on the north end of Main Street, installing those inlets, structures of the driveways. Also, the finish out work continues on the Rock Creek Bridge cover, it's actually starting to look like a true nice railing, has a little bit of historic look to it. And you also see some of the stone work that's being done, an example of what's to come. The contractor will continue to work weekends as necessary, obviously, they're probably gonna be out of commission tomorrow with the rain expected overnight, probably even on Saturday. Target date for completion of the project remains at this point, early summer, weather permitting, there's no indication that the virus is gonna have an impact on the contractor's work at this point. Status report on sales tax collections, the March 2020 sales tax check representing the January 2019 sales totaled some $35,632. Really was a flat check compared to March of 2019, it was down about $115. Actual collections, when you take all of the other fees and adjustments and modifications in it, we actually were, were up slightly from March of 2019. Fiscal year to date, sales tax collections totaling some $281,221, up about 7% from the same period last year. Fiscal year to date, our sales tax collections represent about 57% of the budget, and we of course are at the 50% mark right now. Since Main Street construction began, sales tax revenues are running about 11% ahead of the prior year, the same as we reported last month. Status report on miscellaneous items, work continues on the 31 fiscal year 2020 goals and priorities established by this board back in July of 2019. We've got about 13 of those complete, about seven are in progress, several of the remainers are long-term goals, we've got a couple of those remainers that we're gonna implement in this fiscal year, in particular, the launching of a Facebook page and also a Twitter page. Election Day is Saturday, May 2nd, we'll be talking more about that later in the meeting. Early voting scheduled to start on April the 20th and run through April 28th, new voting equipment will be used in the election. Now, let's spend a minute talking about where we're all living. In some cases, it's a pretty rough life, and I think in all of our cases it is. No one wants to go through what we're going through right now, but we're facing the first pandemic we've seen in our lifetime, as far as our lifetime in this room, most of us. And that is a serious situation that continues to evolve. We're just at the beginning of this, and I think it's important to understand as we head into the, the discussion on this, that this is, we need to look at this as a marathon, it's not a sprint. And we have many long days and many long weeks and probably a couple of long months ahead of us. But I think it's important that we pace ourselves, and we don't overreact, and then we remain as calm as possible. And I really stress that, that is critical, that we keep that in mind. Neat reactions during this time accomplish nothing but create panic and create concern, create credibility issues, create, you know, just really a lot of consternation and anger and frustration. So we're urging folks to stay calm as we deal with this. So far today, we have six presumptive positive cases reported in Bell County. This number is gonna go up significantly, this number is up significantly right now. These are the numbers that they're reporting at this stage of the game. And you may say, oh, Lord, it's spreading, it's going so fast across the county. No, what's happening is, we're starting to see the cases that exist because we're starting to test for the cases. As the testing becomes more available to people, the case number is gonna go up significantly. We're in the process of building benchmark data at this stage of the game to be able to determine if we're able to flatten the curve, which you've heard so much about over the last few days in the media. So do not be surprised by these numbers, do not be shocked, do not panic over these numbers, they're gonna go up significantly. And it's just the reality of it. I'll give you an example of, of situations, there's one office complex in this county that got locked down today because 12 people in that had lunched with another employee who's tested positive. That doesn't mean all 12 of those are there, but they're gonna go through testing. And so we're gonna have the, the testing ratio to grade against, you're, you're just gonna see a lot of weird numbers going up and down. If you want to track the number of cases that we have in Bell County right now, those are gonna be updated at 2 o'clock every afternoon on the Bell County Public Health District page. They're gonna stop issuing press releases and issuing special releases for every case that gets reported. We're at that point where you're gonna burn them out, you're gonna wear them out, and quite frankly, people are gonna get target hardened, so there'll be a tracking system. Let me tell you how that tracking system's gonna work, and I'm gonna talk a little bit long on this, this part of the report tonight, but I think it's important that we hear some of this. There's a tracking system that they've set up, they're gonna identify the cases in Bell County by Temple, by Colleen, by Belton, by Harker Heights, and then they're gonna identify the remainers by Bell County. So the smaller cities may have cases, you're not gonna know where smaller city those are in. I think they're doing that, quite frankly, to avoid classification of communities, you know, obviously, as smaller communities versus larger communities, you know, people's minds go racing, and, and quite frankly, you classify communities based the way people talk. So that said, they've made that decision, which I think is... So, that said, they've made that decision, which I think is probably a good decision, but that's what you're going to see, the breakdown on their site, Temple, Belton, and then were our cases, if we have cases here, if they have cases in Rogers, if they have cases in Holland, if they have cases in Nolanville, those are all going to be more than likely in that Bell County category. So, just kind of keep that in mind, but again, look for those numbers to go up. We've been playing with this for a few days, and I don't say that in a joking fashion, but we've been playing through this process for a few days, waiting to the point where we hit a point of concern that there was some type of evidence or some type of belief that there's community spread of this particular virus in the community. The difference between travel-related spread and community spread is Mike Cogan coming back from Spain and bringing it overseas with him from Spain and landing in Bell County. The difference between community spread is Mike in turn giving it to Amber, and Amber in turn giving it to Rodney. So, when you hear community spread, it's basically a local contact situation, and, and it's, it's, it's what it means, community spread, uh, not travel spread. The cases we've had documented to date in Bell County, at this point, they're saying those are travel-related. I will tell you, you're going to start seeing community spread cases. With the understanding and seeing some of the growth in the numbers and, and talking to epidemiologists and such, Judge Blackwood decided to go ahead and pull the trigger, and he issued the emergency disaster proclamation yesterday. And in the world of emergency management, keep in mind, the county judge is at the top of the food chain, as far as county governments and, and, and local government goes, then comes the mayor, you know, and the mayors, and, and both of those guys typically end up designing their responsibilities, they make the power call decisions, but the people work underneath them and do that work. The judge decided to go ahead and pull the trigger, and he made the, he made the proclamation for the entire county, okay? Every city has the ability to do its own proclamation too, and typically, cities will do their own proclamation if they desire to enact directives, uh, if they desire to enact orders that differ from that which the county order does, if they want to be more restrictive and those type of things, they will typically do that. Will we get to that point at this stage of the game? At this stage of the game, we're in lockstep. The only community that has gone on from their own at this point has been Colleen, and they did not do so in, in a straight fashion, they basically took the judge's order and they copied the judge's order and their mayor signed it, just to leave them that opportunity. Our feeling is, no, we're not there yet, we need to work as a team, we need to work as a group. The governor has declared this a statewide emergency for every county in the state of Texas, the judge has declared it a county emergency, so the access to the federal funds and the state funds is there for the villages of Salado, much like it is for Nolanville, much like it is for Temple, Belton and Colleen. So, that added disaster restriction locally by the villages of Salado is not going to do anything other than give us the power to maybe go further in whatever restrictions we want to impose, but quite frankly, we're very comfortable with the restrictions that have been imposed today. Those restrictions that were, that have been imposed today are very simple and very straightforward. You heard a lot about it yesterday, uh, and it's basically a limitation on gatherings, uh, 50 or greater, uh, you're not allowed to do it, you can't have it. It's a limitation on restaurant and bar operations, they're only allowed to provide takeout, carryout, uh, curb service type things. Uh, you cannot have any sit-down dining areas in bars, sit-down drinking areas in bars, uh, it's basically all curb, takeout, delivery, uh, as far as that goes. There were some restrictions released last night by the governor that's, that allows restaurants to actually begin to provide alcohol and deliver alcohol with their meals on, on the delivery piece if they choose to do so. Uh, but again, no sit-down dining and no sit-down drinking, uh, and just keep that in mind, that, that's there. The other thing that was done was recreational facilities were basically prohibited, they were locked down. That includes our gyms, anytime fitness is dark right now, Salado Fitness is dark right now. Uh, so those gyms are shut down at this stage of the game, we don't have any bowling alleys, anything like that, so that part of the order didn't really get to us. Uh, and so, you also have a situation that, that has, that, that the judge has done, and that is, he's put a fine in, in the process, and I think it's important to understand, it is not something that's looked on lightly, uh, it is a fine that can go up to $1,000 per violation, and it also could potentially carry a jail sentence. There have been a couple of businesses, not in this community, but a couple of businesses in this county, who have pretty much told the judge that, you know, if you got a problem with it, come arrest me, because I'm going to keep my business open. They're in the process of working through those. I will tell you this, within 45 minutes of that order being issued, we had copies of that order on the street by our police department being delivered to all of the businesses, and I'm proud to say that our business community was extremely receptive, some of them were already in the process of stacking their chairs, and they were very responsive to it and very understanding to it. In fact, I've only gotten two calls from businesses, uh, and, and they've been the result of miscommunications that came from the health department, those type of things are going to happen, we're all going to misstep periodically through this process, because we're all moving real fast and doing a lot of things. Uh, but the businesses here have, have done a very good job of complaining at this stage of the game. Bruster Brothers is wide open for business, Sethgo is wide open for business, uh, the only thing they had to do, change in their operations, is they had to get rid of the seating areas where people sit down and dine. Uh, they are encouraged to have people social distance, everybody's encouraged to have people social distance at this stage of the game. Social distancing again is about a six foot difference between you, uh, so it's important that we practice that. Uh, when you're in line, somebody stood close to you while you're waiting to pick your food up, move back, politely ask them to move back and create the distance, that's, that's a proven way to help keep the spread or slow the spread of this, if you will. Let me talk to you about the judge's directive, because the governor today came out, and he issued a detailed directive, his order, uh, which addressed several things, uh, and probably the most, obviously, did a statewide temporary shutdown of school until April the 3rd, and they will reassess that prior to April the 3rd, as far as whether that's going to get extended. Our school districts have stayed pretty much in lockstep, uh, Belton ISD had made the decision to go to the 3rd, Salado ISD, Temple, uh, Colleen, uh, Harker Heights, those guys had agreed to go till next Monday and reevaluate, well, everybody's now going to the 3rd, uh, and the parents are going to start doing homeschooling, there's going to be distancing that takes place, so it's going to be a whole different world, families are going to get a lot closer over the next few days, which may not be a bad thing, if, if the truth be known. Uh, what's going to happen tomorrow is this, the judge's order is going to get amended tomorrow to come in line and park, we believe, with what the governor released. He closed school today, but the other thing he did do was he mandated a 10% or, excuse me, a 10-person limit on groups. We're at 50 right now on our order, and so, he's mandated that to go down to 10. It's going to be tough. I will tell you, how does that impact this particular body? There are seven of us up here, which means that we have a meeting after that gets ordered, that means there are going to be three out in the audience. So, we're looking at ways to deal with that situation, there's probably going to be some telephonic, uh, you know, and some, some, uh, mobile, uh, mobile distancing that we're looking at as far as how we can get the board maybe in one area and still have enough public. John is doing a good job with his, with his effort, and we'll probably ask him to help us out, try to keep the video going so people can see it, because this government needs to be transparent, it needs to be open, especially during times like this. So, uh, be looking for that, that's going to be a little tricky, keep in mind, that also means this, that also means if you're at the gas station, and everybody's sitting there pumping up, and you've got a group of 10 people sitting over there talking about what's going on, the group gets broken up. How are we enforcing this? It is a, as I said, it's a significant penalty, uh, and it's, it's, it's a violation of the, the government code, and the way our police department are enforcing this, our, our department will be out with officers, and if we happen upon a violation, we're going to go out and warn them and break it up. If we come back and it still exists, then everybody's going to get ticketed, that means everybody. There'd be the property owner, if the property owner's in the meeting with them, then the property owner gets it too, but everybody who's in the middle of the violation is going to get it, if that's the case. We don't think we're going to have to ticket anyone, we think people are going to be compliant, this town has been really good and receptive to some of this, and they're just need to be patient as we work through this. So, look for an amendment tomorrow of the judge's order, as far as that situation goes. We've taken some actions locally that I want you to be aware of, and that is, we have closed Pace Park, and we have closed Serena Park, those signs will be going up on those tomorrow morning, we're not taking park reservations through May, and we're canceling all park reservations we have between now and the beginning of May, as far as getting that situation through. Visitor centers closed, quite frankly, we've not had a lot of quick traffic in the visitor center since the sound break, but it does not make sense to keep that open. And we've also enhanced cleaning procedures in the, in the municipal building and the police station. Many were multiple cleanings during the day, uh, swiping door handles, those type of things. The beautiful thing about this building is, we have a gate up front, once you come in the lobby, that helps create some social distancing, and then from Municipal Court, there's actually a glass pane in front of that, which helps create some space. So, we, we're spread out, and we're not on top of each other here, which is good, and quite frankly, from a police department standpoint, they're out on the street most of the time. Work continues, uh, as, as we look at, uh, other issues related to this particular situation, the public library has closed, uh, they're front doors, uh, but they are doing two services, they are, uh, doing an outreach service where they're taking, uh, books and things like that to people at risk, uh, but they're also doing a curbside pickup and delivery, so, uh, something that's, that's still worth looking at as far as that goes. We have counseled with them on the need to wear gloves as they transfer the books to and from, uh, they're not just wiping down, literally have the gloves and then wipe them down, so you're not passing. Uh, high likelihood, federal assistance will be available to local businesses and nonprofits that can provide documentation of economic injury. We worked with TM last week, which is Sex Park Emergency Management, and they are circulating documentation data that they've asked us to circulate to businesses, that the businesses are being asked to give a two-week estimate on what type of economic impact they're anticipating this virus having on them. And the reason for that documentation process is because in order to qualify and open the door to the SBA loan assistance for these folks, uh, they need to have an idea of what type of impact they're really going to be trying to, to fund through the loan program. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're asking all businesses not to be afraid to fill this out, it's a simple, very easy form, it's all an estimate, they'll come back in and throw the data up at a later date, you know, if we're able to get that funding, we think pretty comfortably we're going to get this funding. But the thing to keep in mind about this disaster, normally when we deal with disasters, we deal with disasters where it's just in Texas, or it's just in central Texas, and this particular disaster, it's in every state in this United States. And so, you can imagine the volume of claims that are going to be processed, the volume of loans that are going to have to be processed, and the amount of money that's going to be poured out. So, the process is probably going to move a little bit slower than it would maybe in a typical disaster, just due to the sheer volume of what we're anticipating as far as economic injury goes. So, there is going to be some assistance available for nonprofits and businesses, we believe, uh, and I think the judge's declaration helps open the door to that even further. Uh, so, so keep that in mind, and we'll keep you updated as we get more information on those lines. The local food supply is, is holding up good, uh, the folks at Bruster Brothers, if you get a chance, go stick your head in there and thank them for what they're doing, because their job is not an easy job at this stage of the game, but they're doing a good job. Uh, they're still having challenges, as everyone is, in keeping toilet paper, you know, on the shelves, they're having challenges in keeping the Melkanees going, uh, but things are starting to get better, they're telling us, their deliveries are still being very constant, uh, it's just a matter of keeping the shelves stocked, and the good thing about this is, we don't have lines stretching outside of the Bruster's store in this community, uh, you know, like you see in, in other communities, and the people have been very polite, they've been very patient in this community as far as going to that store. That said, the message we're trying to get across to people right now, and it's a very serious message, and that is, stop hoarding. I said in the beginning, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint, and you need to consider your neighbor. Tim may have toilet paper needs that I'm taking away because I'm scared to death and I need to go buy a case of toilet paper. Buy what you need today, what you need this week, and then come back, the store is going to be open, they're not setting down grocery stores. But please, keep that in mind, stay calm, but don't hoard, it's not accomplishing anything. Bottled water, you have a great water supply company, that's a great company of water supply company, so the need to buy bottled water, use the water supply corporation if you've got it. Bruster's, by the way, has plenty of bottled water, we're told, uh, but they're doing a good job, and you need to thank them, they're part of that front line. Overnight accommodation facilities, this one's getting hard, uh, we have had several cancellations, uh, for several weeks to come at a lot of our facilities. Uh, we will begin very soon to feel the impact of the hot tax decline. Uh, it's going to be an interesting timing situation as we look through these things, I've been through a few of these things over the years, and you try to predict the timing in, in, in the development of your strategy if you address the impacts. Uh, some of these guys pay on a quarterly basis, some of these guys pay month to month, uh, so, you know, will that change their paying practices? I don't know, it could, uh, but from a standpoint of timing, what time the, the ill news comes ashore is something we're going to sit down and we're in the middle of trying to work out right now. So, uh, look for some significant hits on the, on the hot fund, as far as that goes. We've had a number of special events that have been canceled, the Packard Club, which is a club that, uh, had, had just kind of returned to Salado last year, and they were coming back with the opening of the Stagecoach, uh, unfortunately, uh, they have decided not to participate, uh, they've got an older population that participates in the group, and they were concerned about potentially being at risk, and so, uh, they, they indicated they want to try to come back next year, and we certainly want them to come back next year, and we'll do what we can to get them here. Uh, the Laser Light Show that was scheduled for, uh, April is going to be moved, uh, we're talking about the possibility of doing that maybe during Stroll or some other time in late fall, uh, we think it'd be a neat event to kind of add into Stroll in this coming year, uh, but again, we're, we're looking at that aspect. Uh, there's a concert that was scheduled, that was going to take place down at, at Barrows on, on the creek, uh, it's going to be a large concert, uh, the individual, the promoter of that concert decided to go ahead and, and pull the plug and reschedule that at some point down the future when conditions improve. We'll probably have a few more events that we'll cancel in the days to come. The Civic Center is not renting out the big room anymore, uh, and, and those folks that had reservations in the Civic Center have been advised and they canceled those reservations, which is a smart thing to do. Uh, how is this going to impact the upcoming candidate forum? I will tell you, if we're at a limit of 10, it's going to significantly impact that candidate forum. So, hopefully, they'll look at some way to, to change that to the point where, uh, you know, people will have an opportunity to maybe watch it online or something along those lines. So, we're talking about hot funds, we talked about the impact on local businesses, and that of course begins to make us focus on our budget, which we've been doing for about the last week and a half, looking at, uh, what ifs, and, and, and it's a difficult, it's a difficult do you, and it's a difficult decision process that we're going through right now internally, uh, but we're in the process of trying to predict the impacts, uh, and, and try to project the impacts on sales tax revenues, we're in the process of trying to project the impacts on wastewater revenues, because it may come to the situation to the point where people can't pay their wastewater bills, and we still have monthly bill obligations relating to those. Uh, and then the hot tax, uh, it does not make a lot of sense at this point to market this community, uh, from a standpoint of, of, you know, ramping up sales tax marketing. We're going to continue to keep this community in the forefront, from a marketing standpoint, as we've been, we're going to stay at our level pace, but ramping it up to try to bring more people into town, they're not going to come into town, because quite frankly, they're being told to stay put, and, and so, you know, our, our goal here is to try to promote people to use our local businesses as much as possible in this interim period, meaning restaurants, you know, those type of things, uh, use the retail shops that are open, uh, take advantage of it, take advantage of the smaller crowds, uh, but we have several businesses that remain open, are going to try to stay open through this process. But that said, we're in the middle of developing strategies to address the potential impact on the village's fund budgets, and it's not just the general fund budget. Uh, at the April 2nd meeting, we're going to bring you guys, uh, our thought process on this, along with the, look at the strategies, strategies that we're looking at, we're looking at everything from upcoming capital expenditures, personnel costs, to, uh, day-to-day, you know, operational costs, uh, to planning costs beyond that. Budget for the coming year is another concern that we've got to think about. As you know, this year, we're coming up on the 3.5% cap, uh, under the new tax law. Uh, I will tell you, with the presidential declaration that was made, and with the governor's initial declaration that was made a week ago, uh, that has opened the door for communities, municipalities to go back and look at not having to follow the 3.5% rate because of this disaster, and potentially go back to the old 8% rollback rate as opposed to the 3.5% rate. If we were to do that, that means we will be adopting our tax rate earlier this year, like on August the 24th at the latest, as opposed to being able to wait until September 30th. Uh, will we need to look at that? Quite frankly, it's just going to depend on how long this thing drags on before we start seeing the return of the flow of income. And, and if it goes for 60 days, you know, you ought to be fine, if it goes for six months, that's a different ballgame, and, and that's something we're going to need to take a serious hard look at, there are going to be some deep cuts that are going to take place in that budget, I can guarantee you that. Uh, the one thing to also keep in mind is this, you heard a couple of weeks ago, the fact that you have a very healthy fund balance, that you have considerably more than a, a community typically would need to have, that money is not, it's, it's not there to go out and spend for anything, but it's there for situations just like this, in the event situations just like this, in the event you need to look for that fund balance, they'll bridge that gap to it. Obviously, that's going to be a route of last resort if at all possible, we're going to look at cutting budget first, you know, and then if we have to lean back in that direction, we can lean back in that direction. But we've got some, you know, tough days ahead of us as we look forward to this thing and try to project and try to see how it grows and see how it goes. You know, I think if we can get the media frenzy calmed on this thing, I think it will be a lot better, and I think people will settle down a little bit. But I think the first few days of this thing are going to be a little rough. And when I'm talking about media, I'm not talking about TM, you know, I'm talking about more the national media play that this thing is seeing right now, and, you know, it's a crazy time, and again, it's something really none of us have been through, but it's something we will get through, and I really want to stress that.
So you need to repeat that for Mr. Cobb, because he keeps giving me the steeple.
It truly is something we're going to get through, and I don't think it's something people should panic over. I think, I think we should take advantage of it in a way, of maybe using this as an opportunity to get to know our families, spend more time with our families, maybe take a little bit of downtime, if you have the opportunity to telegraph it, work from home, you know, those types of things. I think there can be some positive that comes out of this, not just negative, but at this stage of the game, quite frankly, it's a little, it's a little negative, and it's going to be negative, because it's a very serious situation. We shouldn't take it lightly, but we also should not panic. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Questions, please, to Don.
Don, you know I haven't been to Spain, and I haven't infected Amber in any major way that I know of, so just with that. But is there any chances on our hot taxes that the federal, we'll get federal funds for that, reimbursed for that?
That's, that's yet to be seen, Mike, because the parameters, you know, that they place on that funding and the loan capabilities. Keep in mind what you're going to be getting from the federal government, even if it's a government-to-government opportunity, more than likely is going to end up being, you know, if there's economic, economic injuries, more likely going to be a low-interest loan, which I'm going to tell you, SBA loans are nothing, you know, to turn down. SBA loans are one, two percent money sometimes, depending on the situation. Is people getting involved with AD20s and those types of things possible? We've not seen the parameters at this stage of the game that they're going to base their funding on.
Okay, and if we continue down this path, we have a plan for our police department in case some of our officers get sick.
We do. We have a plan, we've established protocol in how we're responding to calls, where we go. We don't go into homes anymore unless we have to go into a home. The individual comes out and meets us on the porch. Our officers are getting protective equipment, that's a big issue at this stage of the game. The PPEs, everybody and their brothers trying to get the protective equipment, and there's a shortage of that. You saw the president yesterday, you know, clear the way for companies to begin producing more of that. We have some on order, we have some, we have gloves already, we have wipes already, those types of things, we're looking for masks, but we have some, we have some gear that's actually been ordered and hopefully is supposed to be in here in the next day or two. But our officers have been instructed on how to address it. I will tell you that people shouldn't take this lightly, and should not joke about having it. We encountered someone today on the streets who tried to use that as a reason in a traffic stop, and I'll tell you that without getting into the details, it's not something to joke about, and it's something we're going to take very serious if we're approached about that, so.
But if our officers do get sick, do we have a backup plan to furnish law enforcement?
That backup plan would end up going to the sheriff's department and to the constable's office. We have interlocals with those folks to service backup. The thing to keep in mind, they're facing the same thing our officers are facing, so the risk exists for them much like it does for us. So it's going to be really everybody working together, and everybody helping each other out.
And then backing up to the highway department project out here, what happened to our schedule where they were going to work quarters of it and not the entire thing from the front to back and starve the traffic like that? What happened to that schedule that they had initially come up with?
They, you know, they're at that point, they're at that point in the project where they're trying to expedite and trying to make up some time. I think in doing so, they've expanded the work area. Has it created a little bit more of an inconvenience? Yes. But one thing that I think you're going to see as a result of what we're feeling right now is the fact that less people are going to be in their way, you know, and I'm not saying that's the silver lining, but the reality of it is there's going to be less traffic downtown more than likely, which should allow them hopefully to, you know, get out of there quicker. But I think what's happened, Mike, is they've tried to cluster a lot of that stuff to try to make up time in the project for some of the rain days they encountered early on, and that's probably where we're being on with right now.
And so how is our 10-person gathering going to impact contractors having to work together out there?
They're required to, they're required to go through separation and distancing, and they're, they've been instructed to do so. Builders have too, by the way, and that's something that we visited with the Temple Builders Group today about, is their folks have been instructed to tell all their subs and tell all the contractors to practice social distancing even on those sites.
I just want to, that's all I have.
Sure. I've got two questions for you, Don. Can we expect any impact on the, from the supporters to delay the sanctuary developments?
We perceive no word about that. You know, I will tell you, with the site development work, I would not anticipate that with site development work, because typically those folks are in cabs and trucks, and they're running the graders and then moving their dump trucks around. When you get into the house building thing, you're more than, you're more than likely going to have larger groups of people in clusters where we will be. I don't think they're going to be building houses out there in the next two months. I think you're going to see two months worth of site work, you know, maybe three months worth of site work and getting things ready to build houses. So hopefully by that stage of the game, the water will have gone under the bridge.
Okay, and that's in progress, and it's still scheduled?
Absolutely.
Okay, then my last question is, as far as the police jurisdiction of a golf course, if I can, let us see, and I see it all the time, six or seven golf carts in one team box. Does the police have authority to board a golf course?
The, the order says private or public gatherings in a public or private place. So the answer to the question is, if we get a complaint, we're going to go try to break the crowd. I, my guess is, I will tell you that at this stage of the game, I've not seen 10 in a group. Typically, you see a foursome is the most bad single, and normally it's twosomes and threesomes. That's all I got.
Other questions, please? Don, I have, I have a question. In the speaker registration form, Ms. Wallace said that Bush, Hodge, Asens, and other most that she knew have not been offered the ability to tie into the sewer. Is that true, or what is it?
Uh, no, we've actually had discussions with them about the idea of extending the service to those locations. I think prior to construction, prior to my arrival, there were discussions with them, and I think that, I was not partying to those discussions, I can tell you the ones I've been partying to, and I think that there is interest on one part of paying whatever is necessary, I think there's another party that's not interested in picking up the impact fees and things like that.
Well, everything that Don said rings very true. I worked at Fort Hood, and we worked in a 265,000 square foot building called Soldier Development Center. Every day, we have four to five thousand soldiers every day come through that building. This is how serious this is. No 10. It has to be 10, or we're going to be troubled. My job is in higher education. We deal with colleges from Harvard all the way down to Central Texas College. And we do it with 46 people, 18 are counselors. When a soldier comes and wants to go to college, he or she will see one of those counselors. The counselors work as many as 30 centers a day. Beginning Monday, the counseling will only be online. In other words, you're not going to have a possibility of talking face to face. I will also tell you that we have troops in other countries that are scheduled to be home a month a year. They're not home, and they're looking for four months. When a soldier comes back from overseas or from being where there is a possibility you can pick up that virus, they go into 14 days of being quarantined, and they do not go home. We have a computer lab strictly for soldiers who perhaps do not have a computer. They can come and they can sit at the computer for as long as they want. Most of them are typing, typing their orders, or they're typing how to get paid, and some of them are studying for college. On any given day, we will see 500 soldiers using those computers. We have now shut down what we call the MLF, or Computer Lab. With schools being closed, we have single parents with children. With schools being closed, parents are buying tents so their schoolchildren can invite other schoolchildren in to plug. It is expected that within the next six months, really, I want to be very straight about this, in the next month, maybe two months at the long, the number of cases will double in the United States. So here's what I'm going to say to you. Try to spend in Salado. Groceries, whatever you buy, try to do that. And the second thing I'm going to say, and the last thing I'm going to say to you, is be kind. Take care of each other. We talk business, Don told you exactly where we're going to be with this budget, but there's going to be people out there who will not be able to meet, there will be elderly people out there who will need to go to the doctor and no transportation, there'll be single parents out there who are barely making it now, who may need some help babysitting. This is not the time for self-interest, or greed, or anything else like that. This is the time to be what Salado is, a team that works together. And I hope, I truly hope, that wherever you are, wherever I am, wherever our soldiers are, if you are a praying person, you will pray for this. We figure, we, I don't figure anything for them. We talked today about 18 months of six. 18 months to bankrupt this village. So we've got to do very, very careful with how we spend money. Don, I don't want a large expenditure. I want the, I want the board to know about before we go out and spend a large expenditure. I also want to say very strongly, we can get through this, but it's not going to be easy. Be thankful. The state of Texas gave us $5.6 million gift that's going to make us, and they're not even backing down on that. Be thankful about that. This is Salado. We'll do very well if we work together. All right, that's the end of that. Anything else anybody wants to say? Okay, let us get started. Discussion and possible action. Number A, discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed permanent utility easement on property located at 680 North Main Street, Salado, Vail County, Texas. Don?
Yes, your members of the board, we talked about this way back here in the construction process. This is that easement that we referenced when we were discussing a change order relating to Old Town, the Old Town Center. There was a concrete drive that goes down the Old Town Center, and it runs all the way basically from Main Street to the front of the road, that is a city street. And the original plan was to run a line down that concrete street, and that line would be the line that the Old Town Center would tap into. The property owner identified his septic system is peed on the back of his building, which means literally they would have to channel underneath that building to get to the line that's going to be put in the middle of Old Town. So we began exploring alternatives to that, and the best alternative appears to be going across the adjacent property to the north of the Old Town, securing an easement from that property owner who's expressed interest in doing that, and allowing that to be the access point to the Old Town Center to the, to the Main Street line. It's a simple, a simple easement. We have created the terms of this easement, much like the terms of the other easements we secured for the collection system, where we give them an LUE, the equivalent of an LUE, which in this case is now 52, 58. And it's rather straightforward, so our recommendation is that you authorize this easement and allow us to move forward and get this to connect. What we'll have to do, as you know, we took money out of the, out of the expenses as part of the change orders, the savings. We'll have to spend some of that savings to go back in and make the actual line extension in that easement, but at the end of the day, we're still going to be seeing a considerable savings as a result of this movement. So statute recommendation is approved.
Questions, please, to Don?
I've got a question, Don. So the $27,800, that was going to be the cost to go off and under the road?
It was, that was just the cost to go down the concrete drive, but the property owner would have been responsible for boring under his building.
Okay, so, so if we go the other route and build the easement, we can save 20,000 dollars.
Very safe, significantly. Still.
Would you like to blend with the situation?
Mayor, take a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Listen, if it may, second. Discussion, please. Question has been called. On the favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise. B, discuss and consider possible action regarding the development of an ordinance establishing permitting process for large public gatherings. Don?
Mayor, let me, let me talk briefly about this and then make a suggestion, and that is, we talked about this about a year ago, and about the fact that, you know, we're growing in our activities, our events, and we have a very confined downtown area that's challenged at times from a parking standpoint. You have a community that, quite frankly, is wide open for noise travel from one end to the other. In translation, you can have a concert on the interstate or on the other side of the interstate, hear it in the middle of Mill Creek, you know, depending on the weather, depending on when the wind's blowing. You have an environmentally sensitive area that we've got an obligation to protect. That said, all of those things considered, we've talked and seen the need for some time to maybe look at some type of permitting process. This particular process is not, and I will stress, is not intended to target any business in this town, and to say so is absolutely crazy. What it is, is this is, this is good government, and quite frankly, is intended to promote good planning. We're not wanting to bureaucratize the event planning process in this town. In fact, all we're really wanting to do with In fact, all we're really wanting to do with this idea, and it's come back onto the board because we had a concert that was being planned in town where the word on the street was there could be anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 people. And the question was, where do they park? What provisions are being taken? And we had a long discussion with the promoter, who's a good guy, a real nice guy, and very sensitive to the concerns and willing to do what needed to be done. And was willing to voluntarily come to the board to seek permission before he pulled it because of the COVID-19. That said, what we'd like to do is we'd like to see if we could put together a permitting process that would require the permit only to come to the board if there was some type of right-of-way or public property dedication that was going to be needed for that event. And if not, there would be a set of administrative parameters that we would set that they would simply submit their plans to show what they're doing security-wise, to show what they're doing for parking, to show what they're doing for environmental, and to show how they're going to deal with any type of noise mitigation if necessary. And we would review it and approve it if everything seems to be in order. And our goal is not to stop these things. Our goal is to try to make sure they're planned properly so they come off of that hitch. And that's all it is. And I think some people think differently about that, and that's not the case. So what I would recommend we do is this, and that is I'd recommend we invite some folks to come to the next meeting and we place an item on this agenda, next meeting, for a workshop. And just have a good 30 to 45 minute discussion if it goes that long. We could do it before the regular meeting if we wanted to, but literally try to come up with some framework. I'll come up with some rough framework to toss out to get the discussion going and see what we can do and see if we can get some input from some of the folks in town to do these things. But keep in mind, this is not necessarily to target those that do these things. We get a lot of new events in this town every year. People like to do things. And that's what's cool about Soleto. We just want this to go smooth and to make sure they're planned. And to make sure that somebody doesn't wake up at 11 o'clock at night and get knocked out of bed by some noise they didn't expect, you know, whatever, from that end. So I'd like to put this on the next agenda for a workshop if we could. If you all want to do it before the meeting, we could, or make it as part of the meeting. It's your choice.
Questions, please, Don?
I think it's a good workshop.
Yeah, that, but you want to do the workshop before the meeting or after the meeting? The regular meeting. Like at 5:00, have the workshop and then do our regular meeting at 6:30? Or 5:30 and do the regular meeting at 6:30?
I think 5:30 would be fair. People can get here.
Does that work every, every schedule? Mayor?
You know what I'm going to have to do. If 5:30 is all right with me, I'll just have to take some labor to do it.
So we'll just shoot, maybe schedule the workshop for 5:30?
Can you make that quick?
5:30 and we'll invite some folks and then let the public know if they want to come off with some input.
Are we sure about our next meetings? Our next meeting is going to be very packed anyways, and the fact that we may not be having this speedation.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's true.
That's a good point.
Can we push it out a month? Is it something that has to happen right now?
No, it doesn't. But I don't think we want to kick the camp too much farther down the road.
No, we've got two meetings.
Yeah, that's fine. We move it to May, maybe the beginning of May, we'll have a better idea of where we are too. It could be down to five episodes of ten. Does that work?
Do you want a motion or do you just want to stop?
I'll just, I'd say, let's say, let's go date specific if we need to change it because of bump. So the first meeting of May, postpone this out until the first meeting of May and put it on as a workshop item, recommendation.
And who's going to be your businesses you're going to invite?
Well, I think I'd probably invite Johnny's, I'd invite Barrow's, I'd invite the folks from Serena Fest. You know, I'd invite, you know, kind of, I'd invite the winery.
June?
Yeah, I'd invite those folks. I think we invite the folks who are normal event planners, but also make it open for others.
Is this going to involve a cost to obtain a permit?
My recommendation would be no.
And what kind of numbers are we talking about? Is it 200 or 10 as a target?
That would have, that would, five. No, that, Mike, that would be something we could all talk through as far as that discussion process. So I want to go in there open-minded. I mean, I don't, it's one of those situations that maybe no good numbers, maybe just establish some reasonable parameters and reasonable reporting and planning requirements that they have to show us that they've got. I mean, example being, if someone came into us and showed that they had some correspondence from the two churches stating that, you know, they're allowed to park at our event, that in my mind meets the parking requirements. So the concept here is just to show that at least they've thought through some of these things and we don't get totally blindsided at the end. That's all it is.
Do we go into the discussion about specific locations for those who are outside of the center town?
Again, I want to go with this thing open-minded and let everybody think through it. I mean, I think someone better way to do it. Because I have no preconceived notion other than the fact that I think we need to have some type of process to bring the people in to want, you know what you're doing ahead of time.
Okay, then putting up the second one.
Hold it.
And we're going to have the workshop before or during?
We'll probably do it before.
If 5:30?
Depending on the conditions, yeah. I think Mayor Ray's a good point because we may be hold.
Pushing out April?
May, first thing in May.
May 7th?
Good, 7th. Okay, number C, discuss and consider possible action regarding the appointment of a member of the Soleto Economic Development Advisory Board.
Mayor, we'd like to move this item to the second so we can have the individual here for you to hear.
Number D, discuss and consider possible action regarding a request for variance from the village of Soleto's Farm Sprinkler Reforming for two retail businesses located at 21 North Main, Soleto, Bayou County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be accusing myself of this conversation even though it does not involve my current building, or at least it does involve the company of this room.
Yes, sir. This is kind of a pretty straightforward scenario. We've got a property, 21 Main Street, which we're all familiar with. It has, you know, a number of businesses, a number of shops in that particular property. And the landlord tenant, or landlord and tenants have been discussing the idea of making some modifications to two of the businesses. Coffee House Lively and the other retail shop that we talked about, Magnolias. One of those does not have a CO, one of them has a CO. The fact that improvements are being made on the one that does not have a CO means that it needs to get a CO now, it needs to be done properly. And the changes to that are going to, to that particular building are going to push them over the threshold for requiring a sprinkler system. On the other building, or the other shop, should I say, where the changes are being made, the one that has a CO, those changes are going to require an increased capacity as far as the determination goes for their, for their lift as far as occupancy goes. Again, requiring a sprinkler system. So the landlord and then the property manager have approached the village about, you know, they're concerned obviously about the high cost of a sprinkler system, which I can understand for, you know, a small retail area like that. And so they've talked about their alternatives. So we went through an exploration process and we have the ability to grant exceptions. Obviously, you know, our position from a staff standpoint on the issues of sprinklers is if possessions are to be granted as far as not requiring those, that we need some type of guarantee of safety, some type of guarantee of life safety in a different direction to make sure that we're covering our base and we're not just walking away from a sprinkler requirement. So we had our village inspectors go over and look at both locations and give us an analysis of what they felt needed to be done in the way of safety. And you have before you the list of recommendations that we would offer up if you're willing to grant this exception to the sprinkler system. And they're pretty straightforward in that it's that the occupancy load in each business shall be limited to 99 people or less and properly posted, which means properly posted means not a little small sign over the restroom door, but it would be very visibly posted in the restroom window or in the, in the business door maybe or somewhere very visible and not some small deal that says the occupancy load cannot exceed that. I would almost like to say 95 as opposed to 99, 95 or less, and make it that in both locations from that standpoint. That emergency lighting should be installed in each of the businesses in question. That all exit doors in each business shall be properly signed. And that the exit doors in each business must swing outward. That lighted landings shall exist at all ingress, excuse me, all egress doors for each business. And that the separation between the two retail businesses, in one case, shall have at least a one-hour fire rating as far as the wall between them. And that each business must have a monitored firearm system. You have granted an exception before to the sprinkler system, the stagecoach, with only the firearm system requirement. This is a different situation than the stagecoach. It's a retail environment. It's not an accommodation environment, hotel motel. Our feeling is that it's a very small complex, that with these particular safety parameters set forth and required, that we would be comfortable from a staff standpoint moving forward with the request of considering not adding a sprinkler system, you know, having a firearm system in addition to the other improvements as mentioned. The applicant is here. Do you have any questions with him? If not, we're, you're either discuss and consider.
The applicant is?
Wait, we're going.
Sure.
Please feel free to speak to us about what you think.
Okay, thank you. I'm Wick Thomas, work with First Texas Brokerage and we're, I'm the manager.
Could you talk directly into that?
Sure. I'm Wick Thomas, I work with First Texas Brokerage. We're the property management company that manage it for the landlord. And basically, what the design was for this remodel of Soleto Square was to allow tenants to tweak their spaces, at least that's the way they envisioned it when they first started discussing it, to better suit each of their businesses. The remodel itself, I felt was minor and should have been a relatively inexpensive project. It consisted basically of going in a couple of cased openings to divide two areas that were currently not loaded, as well as taking one wall down to open up two spaces and then re-establishing a restroom that was originally a restroom and kind of converted to a closet and wanted to take it back to a restroom. So I was surprised, you know, when I turned in the original application over a month ago, asking for a remodel application, expecting it did pretty simple process and it quickly spiraled into possibly getting a sprinkler system, which is going to be unjustifiable for what they want to do. Of course, I understand the insurance safety is a primary concern for all of us and I really appreciate the village considering a variance to allow for hopefully a more practical solution that will hopefully be more financially feasible so that we can make those changes that the different tenants and businesses want to do to hopefully improve their businesses. I did want to ask one thing, is that since each of the line items that Don or the staff is recommending, if you guys delay them individually rather than as an entire group, because there is a cost associated with each model. And the cost is what's going to, you know, determine if it's feasible for the tenants to go to the forward, you know, with making changes to that line. So I guess what I was asking was rather than look at it necessarily as a group, as a big group, this list of things, you know, maybe look at it individually and specifically. You know, one line is a separation between two retail stores with a minimum of one hour rating. Basically, the situation is there is that we've got a store that has three cased openings similar to the one that goes out to the front over there. There are three of them between two different spaces. We would like to fill those in to divide those two spaces. And so to me, to require a one hour, and I don't know what's involved in that, maybe, maybe there's not a whole lot involved in that, but what we have planned to do is basically fill those into where it matches the existing walls. To require that those have a one-hour rating, I guess I don't know that I see the point in having a one-hour rating on three cased openings on all the walls that surround them or whatever they are. You know, some just things like that. But I get it, you know, if we need to make some changes to ensure the safety, I get it. Like I said, I appreciate you guys considering a variance for sprinklers because that would be mandatory. So that's all I have to say, but we'd like to answer your questions.
Questions, please?
And I do, I did bring some pronouns and some pictures of, you know, kind of what we're looking to do. If you guys would like to look at that, if that helps that reach.
Especially?
No, good.
Will there be any impact to the LUG's preservation or increases to say the same?
No increase as far as that goes. Let me very quickly jump in in response to a little bit what he said. And I understand his concern on that, but we're talking about life safety and we're talking about fire. And if you have a wall, say he has a wall that's one hour rated, but he's got three holes in it and he's going to fill in those holes with non-rated material, then that's a void. That's a risk of fire going through that unrated area or the lower rated area. So that spread is, the goal is to try to keep spread down with the fire department. And then the monitoring system is there. Our feeling from a staff perspective is all of these are probably things that we would want included in any recommendation if you're going to waive a sprinkler requirement. I'm, all I understand is sprinkler concerns in a small facility like this, in an existing facility like this. But our feeling is that some of these, quite frankly, are required anyway to be there, not just as part of this deal you're out there right now.
Do we know if the existing wall is four or one hour prior rated?
Yep, the absentee term for that. That's just a requirement that our village inspectors look at it. Don't need it to be guaranteed.
And that matters?
Other questions, please?
Not much expenses there here with all the exit doors having to swing out. Is that currently employers, is that going to require retail of all of them?
I don't think it will require retail of all of them.
I think only a couple, one or two.
I'm not sure. I know there are some that swing in, but there will have to be some change, but I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't, I don't want to work on any investment yet because I didn't know what was under required.
I think it's only a door to where I need to do that.
What's the, I don't expect you to have any answer, but what is the weight between hospital fire insurance versus making the upgrades and possibly getting a lower fire insurance or property insurance?
I don't know.
And Don, what's our liability?
You know, Ronnie, we really probably don't have, anybody can, we really probably don't have a direct liability. If we think through it and we talk through it and make a decision where we declared our intent and reason behind that, our, I think we need to be careful. You know, we had this discussion with the stagecoach. And we need to be careful what actions we take in weighing requirements and making sure that we've got adequate justification for that and adequate support to cover the alternative to make sure it's accomplishing the same thing or at least moving in that direction. Hence the reason we came up with six or seven changes. But liability wise, I don't know that we've got any inherent liability in that per se. We've got a moral obligation, but we've also got the legal obligation to always try to act in such a fashion that we're there to protect the public health safety and wellbeing.
Is this decision that you may deny?
He's been waiting from a timing standpoint, so, you know, I would leave that up to him as far as what his desire is for a timing decision.
We're kind of, kind of with Amber, you know, that's the question I had was is the remaining wall, you know, one hour rated, none of its one hour rated. You're looking at replacing the old wall. I don't think that wall ended on how, how much we're talking. If your existing wall is already one hour rated and you're just having to make the rest of it one hour, that's a different cost. Is that kind of where you were thinking Amber? So?
I'm also, we did have a stagecoach, people staying there. Nobody's staying overnight at this facility. So, you would think they would be in some sort of mental state where they would get out, you know? I know you're concerned about the things in the building, but really talking about life, health, safety kind of thing, talking about people, that's important. And so, getting people out, you know, I'm a little more lean on that. So, I mean, those are, those are the kind of things that I'm also looking at. But, so yeah, I think the fire rating is my biggest concern. If we can get past that and know if that wall is rated currently, do you know, I mean, do you know?
May I have him, may I have him describe what a fire rated wall is? I was like, a lot of walls, I could help him out if you'd let me. A fire rated wall, you have a seven inch clearance between each wall. Each wall then on the outside, it's going to have two layers, three quarter inch sheetrock from floor all the way to the roof. That way, and cannot be penetrated. According to the National Fire Code, National Building Codes, it has to be one solid wall, fire rated all the way, that is the firewall.
What is the difference? What is the difference between the cost of sprinklers and to do what you described there? What's the difference in the cost?
Like I said, I really haven't gotten any counseling because I didn't know what was going to be required. I mean, over the phone, I've talked to a company that does sprinkler systems. And over the phone, he said, maybe in the ballpark of $10,000. But that, that's not even evaluating property or seeing if we've got the water supply outside of the building to provide it. And so, I think there's a lot more to it. I, I expect it to be more than that. I think more discussion is needed.
Yeah, I, yeah, I could tell you, I can tell you the infrastructure is one thing that we encounter. And it's, it's a good water system, but by size, maybe, maybe something needs to be looked at, just supply, but if you can get the sprinklers just for 10 grand, that's an Amazon price. That's good. Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable really using that number since I'm not having to actually come and look at it and, you know, actually put together and fish it in.
Yeah, I'd like to know what that variance is. I mean, I'd like to know what the difference is before I grant a variance. I mean, I'd like to know, I don't want to sit here and say, yeah, implement all these. And you could have put a sprinkler in for half the cost of what it's going to take to do all those upgrades. I mean, to me, I want to know my best estimate of what I could do.
Does it currently have an alarm system in the building?
No.
So, you have to add an alarm system that also can monitor for fire, which is another...
Well, just from, from the discussions I've had in leading up to this, what I've been told is sprinklers would be more expensive doing this list of things. So, like I said, I've not gotten specific estimates for everything, but just going on and talking to people that have dealt with it before, that's what I'm...
These, these businesses are among other businesses. Do these two businesses have enough fire insurance that if it broke out and went into the other businesses, that they can cover it?
I don't know.
I'm trying to get an offer here.
Yeah.
The deal is to consider these items on paper, not on what's being discussed.
And if you want to delay, if you want to postpone it, to give them a chance to go through cross-descriptions and bring those back to you?
I was going to suggest that.
Well, I've got another question to you. I've got one more question to you, please. Have y'all talked to the other business owners around about what your intentions is?
We've only been discussing these three tenants that the remodel actually impacts directly.
And their opinion?
Well, they all want it, it all would help them accomplish what they're not accomplishing. Which is what's going on, I think is their desire to do this initiative.
So, can I, can I kind of enter my two terms about this? First of all, the costs doesn't matter, it's not our business. Second of all, doesn't matter what the tenants think, it's the property owner's decision. They can do whatever they want to. We have an option to where we can either say, you're either going to get a fire system or you can have this, whatever sheet for free and you want to do, go for it. I mean, we got to make this simple as anything. Talking over and over, I mean, some of this stuff is not our business.
I mean, the, up to this point, the process has taken me a month and it's affecting renewing leases, not knowing how we're going to move forward because if we're able to do the remodel, it'll adjust worth for the things like that. So, I would appreciate you helping me along with that and move forward.
Any other questions, please, Tony?
Yes, Doc, do we have the authority to issue this variance? Because usually according to the NFA, it's the authority, having jurisdiction, which we have in the past, asked the Bell, Bell County Fire Marshal.
We consult, we actually, we actually are where the authority lies. We're the building official and we have that authority. And our position has been, I'm not going to grant a variance for the sprinkler requirement. We consulted with the Fire Marshal and consulted them on the situation and their advice was much like our position was, and that was, there's going to be barriers when that sprinkler granted, it's going to have to be granted by this board. So, it's no different than the sprinkler system and the stagecoach.
You've actually discussed this situation with the Fire Marshal for Bell County?
Well, for Bell County, that's our, that's our fire bureau.
For Bell? Okay.
And they had one of these, they had one of these in Bell County that they went through with the council.
Although as an engineer, I'm not, I'm not allowed to take any action that might damage the life or health or safety of any individual, so I can't be a party of this variance.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the motion, please.
Okay. I want to make a motion that we approved the variance as written with hold住了, with the exception that if the wall is found to not be fire rated, then we will not require the one hour fire rating. So, if the wall, you see, you understand what I'm saying? Is if the current wall that exists does not have a one hour fire rating, then we will not require those holes to also, to only have the fire rating. Or, they can still put in a sprinkler system. Either way, it's up to the business. That makes sense. That was very awkward.
Let me see if I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is you're recommending moving, that we grant the variance with the conditions as detailed, with the caveat that an examination will take place of the, of the wall that is supposed to be one hour rated. And if it's not one hour rated, you're not going to require him to have it?
Right, because I mean, he's only asking to have, he's only doing construction on small portions of that wall, not the entire wall, correct? So, there's no sense for us to have him to fill in a hole with a one hour fire rating if the rest of the wall is not rated, does not have a one hour rating.
That's not the position.
Because it's saying, we're saying that wall must be...
So, you're saying the whole thing has to come down and be replaced?
We're saying the wall between those two businesses has to be a one hour wall. Whether he does that, I mean, it's typically not done in partitions, but whether he does that however, that wall from one end to the other needs to be a one hour wall. Because the whole concept is to create a block for the fire to get through and to create time from the fire spread.
It's a single...
It's a retail...
I understand that they're individual retail spaces, but my point is that they own the whole thing. That's like me doing, me owning a house and renting out rooms to my house and me wanting to do some work on it, so they put up a wall in the middle of my house that's fire rated.
The challenge, the challenge you run into is this, is it is a public space. It's retail, it is a public space. And the reality of it is if somebody's in that public space and a fire breaks out on the other, other side and it breaks through and somebody can't get out, the, the concept is trying to confine that blaze if at all possible until someone can get into view of it.
The issue I would have with that, I would say the buildings doesn't have a, doesn't have walls that make these standards. So, we put one division wall up that does, there's a fire, every other wall is going to burn down before that one does, so I just...
But it's going to create, it's going to create time and it's going to minimize the rapid spread of the fire through the rest of the building. The whole goal of it is to, is life safety, property protection.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's always a trump card, but I, it just seems to me like it's consistent with the construction of the building that's already existing.
There are a lot of buildings in this town built probably the way they shouldn't have been built. But, you know, and we're kind of having to come back and make some of those right when we have the opportunity to do that. And that's what this is. That's why you bring things up to go. If it's grandfathered before, you change it, that's when you have to start making those changes.
Can I ask a question before I pull that back? I'll pull that back, reel it back in, but how long is the wall? Ish, we have to...
Can I, can I show you some pictures? But I'll get you guys a photo of this one. I probably actually do that. So, there are, there are two pace openings. You see the wall moves up higher, the first pace opening. Those are the three things that we would like to, you know, to fill in to match the surrounding wall, just to provide this space from this place on the other side. So, that's, I guess you see that, you know, there's, there's three case openings in this place that we'd like to fill in to match the surrounding wall. So, it's the only one that goes up to the, to the other side of the rack. Maybe just have to put those in and match the surrounding wall.
And then we have to tell them we have different businesses?
Yes. Both, both retail businesses have different...
So, the key word you said is springs are going up to code.
I suppose it brings up wall up to code, yeah.
And he's, if he's working, what, the rule of thumb is this, in a grandfathered building, anything you touch comes to code.
Okay, to me then, then I'd like to make a motion, we approve the variance from these conditions and go to 95 people.
Makes sense. That's your motion.
It's my motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies because of lack of second. Sir, could I ask you a question? It's very hard for us to come to a good decision about this. We're not trying to make you hard for it, but we do need to know about the cost. We do need to know that. And if you could just give us some more information, in two weeks, we will meet and pick this up again. Could you do, I know you've got leases and everything, but understand the position that we are in. We are responsible for the health and welfare of the people who are active.
So, what, did I get the cost? How's that going to affect your decision?
We'll know whether it's cheaper to do this sprinkler system or to do the wall.
All right, I mean, I guess I'm at your mercy, what, what you want.
I just want to know what the fire rating level, if it's a one hour fire rating or not. The cost is, it's up to you.
We're not trying to be hard. We're as progressive as we can be, but we do have responsibility here to the village.
What if the cost is exactly the same? And what if the cost for sprinklers and these other modifications is exactly the same? I guess I'm not understanding why a cost would factor in the decision if you guys make it.
Well, it does, it does make a difference. Because if you could put the sprinkler system in for the same cost as fixing the walls or whatever you plan to do, that's really a consideration. But if we don't know that, for sure we can make a decision. And Amber is right. We'd like to know a little bit more about that wall. What you're going to do to it, how is it going to be found to...
There, look. Don't do it. And I'll interrupt. Typically, variances are not considered based on the cost. Typically, variances are based on an existing hardship. Translation in this situation, if you were to find out from the Water Spike Corporation, he did not have the ability from a supply line to, to, to serve that sprinkler system, that's, that's a hardship he's got. But the reality of it is, you can't grant a variance if it's self-reposed and you shouldn't grant a variance if there's some type of cost savings to do that from there. That's typically when you look at variances in that situation. I'll give you an example. The whole reason you were at the stagecoach was because the supply line was not adequate to serve that hotel, the older line at the end. So...
Do we know that here?
Do not know the water, again, he's not had the sprinklers system analyzed. So, the sprinkler guy would have to come out and look at that and make a determination. I think they've got a six or an eight inch line there. Whether that's capable or incapable of supplying what he has to put in is something that he'll have to work out with the water company, his contractor.
Was it standard, or a whole, probably?
Usually to the fours, to the sixes, or sheetrock, I mean, the three fours and the...
Well, the sheetrock is probably... Okay, so, 5A sheetrock and 5A sheetrock on the other side is a, is a one hour fire rating?
That's, that's what the inspector calls it, when you look at it.
Just says two by four, 16 inches of bar.
He said, well, he...
So, you're just going to have to re-sheetrock the whole wall if, if the sheetrock isn't adequate. So, I won't be with that. I think it, it costs a lot, but it's going to be a huge...
Is that my turn to motion?
No, you can do it. I'm just going to leave it.
Make your motion, it's on.
Motion again?
Hmm.
The variance was written, with the exception of 95, make a motion, I agree.
I'll second that.
Also, the maintenance, discussion, please.
105. I don't think 105, I didn't say 100, 295, make a 198.
If we go, if we start just selecting arbitrary numbers out, where we have businesses lining up that's going to, you know, show us this variance from this point on, and basically this is just swapping money considerations and instead of looking at life, health and property versus compliance with the codes, and so it's set in precedent, so...
Okay. Any other discussion, please?
Didn't you refer to 95?
95 is, let me tell you the thought process of the 95. Thought process of 95 is, we're trying to vision at what point will those guys ever be at 95? And more than likely, stroll would be, would be the times. Lively, I don't think lively will ever get to 95. I think the magolias could easily get to 95. It probably has been in excess of 95, you know, over the years in that building. So, our thought process with 95, reasonable, do we expect them to ever get there? Take a look, see here.
Is 95 for all three businesses combined?
No, sir, each of these, each of the businesses, that's right.
And this brings the building up to code?
It'll bring the improvements up to code, not the entire building is up to code, no way.
Improvements will be...
Yeah, the improvements have to meet code. Let me, let me respond to what Mike said. Mike's, Mike's comment is right in the same way. And that is why we went as extreme as we went with these various conditions. Because if you're not going to do the sprinkler system, then you need to find something that is going to create an equal safety mechanism, an equal safety protection. And that's why we went through those. That's why I think it's a problem if you start parceling those off. Because I think this is the bare minimum, trying to meet what a sprinkler system would pay for the requirement.
Any other discussion, please?
Question?
Question, that's been called. Are in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, like most? Now I have to break the code. You know where I'm going to go with this? Minus no, the variance will not be given at this point. What I want to say to you is what I said a while ago, bring us some more information and we'll be able to do this again. This is not finally known. We just want a little bit more information about this. Is that okay?
So you want the cost, you want the can of the water supply support the system, what, what all do you want?
Well, I know about the wall, how, how you do that. I think Danny gave a very good idea of how to do it. We'd like to know that. What else do we need to know, Tom?
Code compliance.
Code, yes.
The, the code compliances, this will get you there. It's the alternative with the sprinkler system, but I don't think he's looked at the sprinkler system and figured out what really is gonna be involved in that sprinkler system. Uh, and, and cost wise, logistic wise, water supply wise, those type of things are all things he probably.
Yeah, that's, the, those are my two things, is code compliance and water supply.
This will get you compliant. This will get you compliant one way. If you go the other way, you don't know if you can be compliant.
They, they had an inspector from your araritas inspected, and that's, that's what he's like, that problem.
That's the code compliance, it's not an error.
Tom, if you're willing to come back with that information, I would like for this to be put on the next board of aldermen, which is two weeks from now, two April. And if you don't want it on two April, then tell Don, and if you do want it, confirm it with him so we can get it on the agenda.
But at this point, the variance request has been denied.
Yeah, so just hold on. Sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're gonna go to. All right, we're gonna go now to E. Discuss and consider possible action on a proposal that the village of Soleado temporarily contract with Soleado Lawn Care LLC to perform certain duties of the Soleado Public Works Department.
Yes, sir, members of the board, uh, as you know, we announced at the last meeting that Franklin, our public work maintenance worker, uh, has taken a position in development, and so that position is vacant right now. As we looked at filling the position, we got to wondering whether it might be more efficient if we outsourced it, as opposed to bringing in a body, uh, with benefits and all of those things that come with the body. Uh, so we decided to talk about the possibility of a trial run on outsourcing, and then doing a temporary contract with the recent mower that you guys have approved and authorized to begin to do some work in the city. Uh, we talked to them about the idea of maybe taking on some additional mowing, in addition to what we originally linked them up with. Uh, but at the same time, rolling in pothole responsibilities, uh, street sign responsibilities, and trash collection responsibilities. Uh, and they have, uh, expressed interest in that, and said they'd be willing to work with us on that. Uh, our thought process is that we would do this on a temporary basis through the end of fiscal year, basically paying them, uh, what we wouldn't be paying out as far as the hourly rate, uh, on a bi-weekly basis to the employee, had we had an employee there. We wouldn't pay them what we'd be paying the benefits for the employee, so we'll see a little bit of savings in this. Uh, but more importantly, uh, and we're gonna see if it works. And our thought process is that if it works, that we would consider making this a part of the next coming fiscal year's budget, and go out for bids, and maybe a long-term proposal with, with the firm to outsource these responsibilities. The day's gonna come where we'll probably need to have bodies in that position at some point, and I stress, multiple bodies. But we're not there yet. It's, it's a one-body position, and if we can accomplish that maybe more affordably and efficiently, uh, through outsourcing, we'd like to give it a try and see if it works. It may not work, but, uh, we'd like to try it until the end of this year and see how it goes.
Questions to Don, please?
I had a question for you, Don. A while ago, we talked about bringing out the second maintenance guy, seven months back, so.
I think one of the, one of the reasons we were talking in that situation is, we have a significant mowing load in this town.
No, no, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is, two guys are part of those two guys, the cost is decent.
Well, it would be, yeah, it would, absolutely.
Cause we're looking at twenty-eight thousand.
That's the efficiency equation we, we're thinking about, so yes.
And they're qualified to do spring work repairs on their businesses?
Yeah, our, our pothole repair, I think, I think we've got, that, we've got a plan in place that we're thinking about, that we would, we buy material for potholes, and it's a bag, it's a bag filled, that we put in. Uh, and as state and county does, and what we do is, we collect the potholes as they check them up this week, and they come in, you know, on a designated day, and they, they fill the material and go fill the holes. Um, they will come with more than one body, which I think is good, uh, which, which will make it more efficient from a timing standpoint, make it a good thing to do on a street signs. Uh, they're, they have no fear of the street sign business, which is good, cause we need to start going through and raising some of our street signs. We want, some of them are not three and a half, four feet off the ground, and they're more likely they can be by the MTCD code and those type of things, so. We think, we think that they could be a real asset, uh, but we'll see. Again, I, it's, it's outsourcing in the department, and I think we could eventually see a net savings. I think the thing to keep in mind also, as, as we talked about this, and that is, if I had a million dollar project, the mayor talked about, there's responsibility we're gonna, we're gonna assume when that project's done. And there's gonna be some landscape maintenance involved in that, there's gonna be some, some other maintenance things relating to sidewalk, keeping grass off sidewalks and things like that, that we would probably roll into whatever long-term agreement we're able to work out in the next budget year with whoever's the chosen contractor. We're not there yet, we're, we're just, we're with our existing caseload, but, uh, there's gonna be some additional cost on that, in that arena next year.
Well, because the blood main disguise is pushing forty thousand a year in.
Oh, yeah.
So this is a twenty-eight five.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter how much, how many bodies they throw in, is the price still the same?
Yeah, that's accurate. The efficiency should be much better.
Any other questions to Don, please? I'll entertain a motion in that case.
Maybe we consider a ninety-day contract with possible extension of another ninety days. And if we want out at ninety days, we can get out.
Frank, I, I almost say, you know, I'd like, I'd like to recommend we could try it for the end of this fiscal year to give them a chance to settle into it. I think there's a lot they're gonna have to get adjusted and acclimated to into their schedules as well as ours.
So if I can show that ninety days, three months?
I think so.
It'll be a tight mowing season, so.
Yeah, I, my, my feeling is that they're, they're in a peak season right now with their deals, so I think we're, we're gonna need to try and get them acclimated into their schedule. They think they can work it, you know, I, I wanna give them a little more of a chance.
I'm, I'm saying we're gonna do it, we're saying give us the out, it's not.
Oh, I think it'll be, there'll be an out in the agreement. We'll actually have an out in the agreement.
Once you got the out in the agreement, I'm okay with that.
And we're not done till after thirty days with them, it's open.
I'm okay with that, Dan.
Maybe they're worth a contract. Sir. The motion is? I'll entertain a motion, please, again. We have to set up a contract with Soleado Lawn Care.
Sir.
I'm sitting in maintenance, seconded, discussion, please.
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Those like, like passes. All right, now we're gonna go into the addendum to agenda. We have discussed number F, a letter F, now we're going to discuss letter G. Discuss and consider possible action relating to the most recent settlement about a center for biological diversity with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to formally designate the critical habitat of the salam, of the Soleado salamander.
Mayor, we're gonna move this item to the next agenda. Mr. Aaron was unable to make it see.
And this leads us to the final piece of business. Number H. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the appointment of judges and clerks to work the May second, twenty-twenty Village of Soleado general election. Tom?
Mayor, a couple of issues we wanna talk about on this, on this particular item. Uh, first of all, as you know, we're in a joint election agreement with the school district, uh, for a May second election. Uh, and the school district has approved the following listed judges for appointment, and has forwarded them over to us, uh, for consideration. Uh, realistically, we're only obligated to appoint the judge, uh, the judge is in, in the situation, but we've got a whole list on there, which we think is good, we've done it in the past, and there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, again, the list coming from the school district. We talked about this before, and that is, uh, for years, we've had the same judge, and that judge's wife worked. Uh, and, and they worked fine, but there's been a recent attorney general's opinion that has indicated that that really is not, uh, something that can be done. And, and you're running to relatives, working for relatives, uh, and it's a situation, these are paid employees. And so as such, we made contact with the school district, and just with them about that. We talked with Eldon about it, and Eldon said, well, he'd rather Lenora do it than him. Uh, she was very open to that, so she is, she is believed judge in the election, has been recommended to the school district, uh, in their recommendation. You have a subsequent name that has been submitted, and somebody's interested in being the election judge, uh, and that's just before, but you have that letter in front of you that we're presenting with us today. That's issue one. Issue two is, we talked about a May second election, and, uh, we were gonna have an addendum on this agenda, but we had a, had time to fasten your puts up timbers for the May. So, you know, I wanna talk to you about this election date issue. Uh, we're not gonna be able to act on moving the election tonight, we may need to call a special meeting if that's your desire. But yesterday, the governor's office, uh, went public, and as a result of the disaster declaration, uh, has eased the mandate regarding the May election date. Translation, if you had an election date scheduled for May second, but as a result of the disaster, concerns about infection spread, uh, those type of things, uh, the governor wanted to give those communities who are set for a May second election the ability to move the election. You can't move it to any other date that you want to. There's only one date you would be able to move it to if you chose to move it, and that date would be November third, uh, which is basically the general election. That's something you need to be thinking about, seriously. The school district is, you're talking with Superintendent Voddy. He indicates that some of the discussions he's had with his board members up to this point informally, is that they seem to support the concept of moving in November because of their concern about potential issues with virus spread. Uh, y'all need to have that discussion too, and you can do that, I think, as part of this discussion, cause you're talking about the overall operation of the election. Uh, and if it's your desire to contemplate, and you'd like to put an item on the agenda to vote to move that, then we need to do that very quickly. And, and I say that in the standpoint that you've got early voting starting April twentieth. Uh, you've gotta get folks lined up, and one of the key things you've gotta do is you gotta get ballots over. And we're, we've gone through the process of prepping the ballot, proofing the ballot, and getting it in, in the format and frame we need. Uh, and now we need full trigger, get that ballot order to the point that we have it available, uh, to be mailed out, but also for in person or the voting. We've talked with, Dr. Voddy and I talked to the production company today, uh, and they have indicated that the drop date they, they need is they need some type of decision by Tuesday, uh, if, if the election date is gonna move. So if it's gonna move, we've got between now and Tuesday. We are in an emergency world right now, which means we can call an emergency meeting with actually about an hour Tuesday's notice, provided we notify the media and, and we post it. It's gonna give you a little bit of time to think about it, but the school board will be meeting on Monday, uh, to, to decide what they wanna do. It's really something y'all need to have a discussion, but it's not something staff's gonna make a decision on, and, and it's a board decision. Uh, you know, the concerns, you know, the concerns on that issue are that this, you know, and that is, the voting area they're in is a very confined area. You know, we are going to be in a situation where potentially we're gonna be at the ten person or less gathering requirement, and maybe less than that come April, I don't know. But I feel comfortable we're gonna be at least ten come April twentieth. So you've got that issue to worry about. You've got the issue of the fact that you've got equipment that people are gonna be touching, and how is that gonna be sanitized? Is it gonna be washed down after every voter touches it? You've got the issue of, of the elderly, some of which are election workers, some of which are voters. You know, and so how do you deal with that? You have the issue of separation, you know, and that is maintaining the six foot distance. You can do it, and there are ways to pull it off if you don't wanna move it. You know, there, there are ways to do it. I think it, it will require some extra procedure and then some precautions, so looking at it, I could balance, I could balance the discussion either way. Uh, but it's something we need a decision on if you're interested in doing that or not. I can tell you the school board is gonna move Monday night. Uh, and, and the preliminary read, they not voter, I think, but the preliminary read seems to be their interest in moving.
How, what are the rules for mailing ballots?
You gotta turn in an application, and there's an application process that you can turn that into, uh, and, and once you turn in your application, the ballot's mailed to you, and then you have, you have to return it by a certain date. That window, you know, is set statutorily. I don't have that date off the top of my head right now.
Can we send an application to every person? Or we do need to have to be certain requirements?
Law says they have to make applications to us.
They have to make the application, but we provide it to them.
You gotta be a little, the answer to that question is, no. And let me tell you why. The, the, the challenge you run into in that situation is, you're inserting yourself in the election at that stage of the game. For us to send out ballots to people who didn't apply for it is no different than somebody showing up, going and dropping in a mail-in application ballot, Rodney's place, and saying, here, just in case you wanted to vote. You know, and, and the reality of it is, the voting process is, you're supposed to, and that's why we make all those forms accessible. We make mail-in, we make in-person, you know, we make election day voting, all of that stuff is there.
But is it accessible to the elderly, probably not, maybe with a computer? Like, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, the, the, the election process absolutely internally is. I mean, the, the, we, we, we've had no issues really with seniors voting on those machines, and it's a new machine this year?
No, we need the, the mail-in option.
All right, it's accessible. They don't have to do it by computer in that situation. What they'll do is they'll, they'll mark a ballot and send it back.
But to make the request, to get that, how do you get that initial form? You have to go in someone, pick it up, or you have to put it offline, right?
Or you can call up and ask somebody to mail it on to you.
But to maximize, to maximize the voting turnout, to win the election, we do that.
Well, the hope would be this, and that is, if you're at a November third election, the hope would be the curve will have been flattened, and we won't be having to worry about the concern of infection at the poll.
I mean, the state issue would be out.
Ideally, yeah, and if it's not, you know, it is. Yeah, you got, you got arguments, you got arguments about voter turnout? And how, you know, you know, if you move forward now at this stage of the game, you know, what type of voter turnout are you gonna have? Are people gonna be reluctant to go vote because of getting sick? I don't know.
That's my guess.
That's a prediction I can't make. I mean, I, I don't. They go and line up at grocery store and wait in line to buy toilet paper. So I don't know how that, what type of pressure you give the polls. I mean, uh, it's hard to kinda predict the public.
Action.
And reaction in that situation.
Tom, my options, if one candidate votes yes, and the other votes no?
Separate elections, in this situation. You're in an emergency situation.
What does an election cost?
Probably three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars. In this situation, we would contract with the school district to, I mean, ideally, you wanna pivot together to be as convenient as possible of voters.
Other questions, please, Tom?
But Don, can we safely have an election where we can separate the, the, the voting booths and, and put lines on the floor so that it can be done? And the only thing that's pushing us to make this decision at this time is your election printout of the ballots. So if we, if we get, uh, into the middle of April, and all of a sudden, uh, you know, everybody's sick and, and we really don't need to be doing this, uh, we can also cancel the election at that time and move it to November. Is that correct?
I think the answer to that question is, yes. And I'm saying that without legal opinion, but I think the answer to that question is yes, based on my understanding.
So the only thing that's pushing us is, is just that mandatory question. So, the only thing that's pushing us is, is just that vendor requests right now to get the ballots printed?
Yes, plus the public safety issue. And then that's, that's a concern. And that's what this is all about. And, and it, it's the public safety issue. There's absolutely no question, absolutely no question, that April 20, the numbers will be far greater than they are today. And hopefully, those are gonna be numbers that are being used to set the benchmark as opposed to new cases above a benchmark. But I feel comfortable, we're not gonna be through this situation and significantly through this situation come April 20. I think we're looking at May or June. And I'm not an epidemiologist, but that's the read we're getting from the experts we're talking to. Can we hold one safely? There are ways to hold one safely. There, I think, yeah, it, let me put it this way. There are ways to try to safeguard as much as you can. There's no guarantee that someone's not gonna potentially get sick or cough into somebody or something along those lines. Whereas if you didn't have the election, that risk didn't exist. But again, who knows what's gonna be a no-how?
If Danny is appointed our election judge, he's not a spring chicken. You know, just observation.
Been doing it for many, many, many years.
Hey, Don, um, so, what, what is, what's the opinion of the Bell County election judge? The, the county election judge, not our, the county. Because right now, in, if this election is in May, we're gonna have early voting. How's, how are they handling early voting for all the precincts? Because in early voting, I can vote in Colleen, I can vote in Shore, I can vote anywhere in this county in early voting.
The primary, the primary early voting, or excuse me, the general election early voting is gonna take place well after April. Keep in mind, this is the only election, this is only the sitting school district election.
No, the school district, in, in the, in the school, can I vote in early voting in other early voting locations? I can't front there, but I can, y'all can.
Right, yeah. You're limited here.
But if the county, what is the county doing with their early voting section pieces? Because...
I don't think they broke, I don't think they broke that topic at this point. Because again, they're well down, they've still got another four or five months to worry about it now.
So, whatever.
We're not, we're not, we're not...
No, they don't. I'm saying that we, we have, so, the, the county, yeah, they're not having the election, but we're having an election. And our only early voting location is here.
Right.
What are other entities in the county doing? What, like KISD and all those?
Not aware of that. I, that, that, I thought you were talking about the county elections, I thought that's what you were saying.
I mean, are we gonna be the only one holding an election in May and everybody else shipped it down the road to go there?
I'm unaware of that answer. I don't know, I don't know what the other guys are doing at this point, I just know what we're doing locally. The county doesn't have anything really to do with us, so then they provide the equipment to us. We staff it, we manage it, and if we have a problem with the equipment, they come and get it. So, they wouldn't be involved in that decision with KISD and those guys are doing it, I don't know about that.
Do you understand what I'm saying? We may be the only one having an election in May, and everybody else shipped theirs, then I don't think that's good.
Oh, no, I think, I think that's possible. I fully think that's possible.
Yeah, but some of the place, other places too, like for instance, KISD, huge numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, Salado, small numbers, you know?
The thing about Salado is, if you remember the last time we talked about testing, was 33% of our population is in the high-risk category.
That's how we need to get the early voting information out, so if you want to do your mail-in ballots, we need to get it.
I think it's, you know, being irresponsible to try to ask them if you have this election at this time. You're asking people to get up, get out, get out of their house and mingle with people when they shouldn't be doing it. And especially in the high-risk category.
I agree.
I'd like to know what school district thinks here, Don, because I, I think we ought to pivot together if we're gonna do this.
We will know Monday night specifically. I would tell you, Michael told me though, that his feeling, that he got from talking to several of the board members at this point was they're leaning towards November.
Well, we've got really one issue on the floor, and then we'll come back to this issue. The issue on the floor is the election judges and clerks. We have the election day, we have the early voting ballot board judge, we have early voting clerk, and deputy early voting clerks. And we have one person. Danny, would you like to go to address us?
Sure. As far as early voting, I, I've worked Bartlett. They do theirs in there. I've worked Cannon, they do theirs in there. But all of the candidates working as a judge. And, and it's easy to do. Yeah, I'm, I'm a machine, you're gonna get, uh, if you get two or one, and then, and then you got your DS 200, which actually reads the votes. And it's really easy to do. You have two separate lines, you can divide by six feet, eight feet, and one person gone at a time. And you can divide it and make sure there's eight feet of, um, apart. It's easy to do. It is the same world.
Why do you want to, why do you want to be considered for a position as the election judge?
Well, I hate to say this, but, but, but one, I think I'll be here in November as the judge, period. Nancy Walston, who is the Republican, chairman for Bell County, and I've been talking about that. And I'd like to go ahead and start with the school. I, I've got the experience, I know how to run these elections. I've been trained, I've got a book over there that tells you who can vote, who can't vote, what things the body do, how to do, whether to vote, all, all, all the stuff. Like, I voted in, uh, in Bell from this last year. And I showed my concealed gun license. They said, you can't use that. I said, ma'am, go back and read your map. If you manual specify, I can use that. But anyway, that's the tough one. But, but anyway, I, I think I'm, um, I can, I, I can do it, I'm qualified to do it. I've been doing it for about 15 years throughout the entire county. I've, I've trained a lot of people to be judges. Uh, I did a phone call from Nancy Walston and said, please go over, we got a new judge, no guns for her. Go over and train the set sort of times. In November, the, uh, this last, uh, time on the plane, I had a Democratic judge. I was the alternate, because it was a Democrat heir. And the poor guy didn't believe it, though. And, and Larry Nelson Matheson was there. And Mr. Zuber was there, and they both shook their heads. It's a good thing you were there, and I don't trust God, but I've got faith in him.
So, Danny, you want to be considered for the position of election judge?
Yes.
For the village election scheduled for May 2?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I think I can do it. Don said, we can separate and make a safe deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I just found out that, uh, school board meeting is at 6 o'clock Monday night, and it's one or two items on the agenda.
That should be interesting.
So, if you, if you would rather wait until to see where they end up falling? And then voting, maybe schedule a meeting for Tuesday?
Okay, but what I'd like to do, Don, is to settle this, uh, judge meeting that tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay, then we'll come back and talk about the other. Okay? You have the names before, does everyone got a copy of the names? Okay, okay. Do we do these individually?
It's your choice. I mean, you can, I mean, it really is your choice on how you want to approach it.
Okay. We are going to do them all. And we have Danny, who wants to be considered for election day presiding judge. So, what we will do is start with these up here, the election day. And we will vote on the presiding judge. And then what we would like to do, or what I'd like to do at that time, once that decision is made, to vote the whole out. Can we do that?
Yeah, I understand it's gonna have to go back to the school board.
If we change.
Yeah, if you change.
Okay. Okay, I'll undertake, um, questions to Don, please.
I have a question for you, Don. Is any one of these judges not gonna step down?
They've all been lined up, and they all have, I believe Lenora helped set them all up, and she and I got them, but...
I haven't heard any complaints from any of these judges at all. It's been very smooth every time you voted, though.
Um, any more questions to Don?
So, the school board's already better than us, though?
That's what it does.
I'll undertake a motion, please.
This is their first decision, is that what you?
I move that we accept the entire list as presented by Anna Brubas School Board.
Motion's been made, and so, a new discussion, please.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise. Passes. Danny, we would like, you would, Danny, you've got a lot of experience, and thank you. All right, now then, let's talk about what we're going to do. Does the board want to move, want the, uh, section later time on Monday? Or would you like to meet on Tuesday?
I'm not making a decision. Does it matter?
We can make a decision, can I?
No, you cannot make a decision.
Oh, we cannot?
Remember the addendum we have.
Well, we can make a decision without our meeting.
You can, you can say, let's go ahead and post a special meeting, and we'll get it posted. That's our decision.
Okay.
No action.
So, I think it, to me, like, it comes down to, would the people rather have the current administration for another six months? Or would they rather brave getting out, you know, in April, May timeframe? There's a lot of what-ifs right now, but, you know, you, you look at November, and that's the start of flu season. So, we're right back where we started, and this virus tends to like cold weather. So, you know, are we gonna be right back where we are? Or we think that if we, if we've done the social distancing, we flattened where we're supposed to, end of April, we should be seeing much better numbers than we are right now. So, if we can have some sort of assurances that from these election votes, that they can continue to clean the machines appropriately, I think we owe it to our village to elect a new group of people. At least give them the option. And if we need to cancel it later, we'll cancel it later, but give them the option to do it now. That's just my two cents, and I mean, not, I'm, I'm in the same group of people that's high-risk. I have a severe, severely compromised autoimmune system, and so, I go to the grocery store whenever I have to. I'm here today, and I promise you I'll go vote. But I'm gonna early vote, so it's more spread out. I'm not gonna wait till election day when it's in line.
So, you think it's prudent to have the election on schedule? And have people have a less, possible less voter turnout, but they can speak their will?
I don't think you're gonna have any less turnout here than you do. We're anticipating, but we can't say that we are, we aren't.
Nobody can anticipate what this is gonna do, but I think it's, it's a smart move to get everybody out to vote.
And then the next group of individuals who are elected will only preside a year and a half instead of two years. It's short percentage of the...
As the Don said, things are not...
Well, Don, I understand what you said, while here, is that regardless of the vote that we took tonight, we can't, is that right? The only thing we can do is consult to me Monday night or Tuesday.
If the issue, yeah, if, if you're not deciding, you're, you're providing direction. The issue is, do you want me to schedule, is it the desire of the board to schedule a special meeting for next week, maybe Monday or Tuesday, to consider potentially moving the election date?
Okay, there it is. Now, will anyone read that motion?
There's no, there's no action to be taken, guys. And here, there needs to be a consensus, and we're not taking action. You're not supposed to act.
Well, how we can this, the community, get their input? If we now in Tuesday? So, if we're making a decision that's, that's impacting a lot of people?
Why are we rushing in to make a decision right now? Well, we really don't know where we're gonna be at the end of April, or even when the early voting starts. I mean, it just seems like we're being rushed to, at the request of the vendor. And you yourself said that we could conduct this, uh, this election in a safe manner. A safe, a big, big, we've got it there right now, like standing in a line, get ready.
Yeah, quick, quick clarification, you're right. And that is, you can set it up, try to minimize the risk as best as possible, but there's no guarantee that it's 100% healthy and, and, I just think, the uncertainties is what you've got to think through.
We go with the Bell County, um, guidelines, like no 10, more than 10 people in a room, and making sure there's no gatherings of more than 10 people. I still think that, you know, we can follow that.
We owe a week-long election, and we don't owe it six months from now.
So, would you like me to post a special meeting for Monday, Tuesday night, to talk about the issue of the vote on it?
That's the only thing we can do. We've been following what you said.
I'd be at 6 on Monday. Okay, it's just a side of the...
I mean, that's, that's fine.
You want me to sign down?
Yeah.
Okay, we can decide if maybe we can get them if I'm running up. And if they do what we do, it'll be, it'll be in the same place. Decide together. We have a minute to vote.
Uh, any, any chance the governor's office would mandate a move of an election?
I will tell you, the only thing that would happen in that situation, let me, let me take a step back from the writing. I think if we get into a lockdown mode, absolutely. I, I think that's, that's, you know, if, if we get into San Francisco, absolutely. To the point where they say no one's going out of their house unless they're going to get groceries, foods, or going to the doctor. I mean, at that situation, I could see potentially the governor saying there will be nothing going on except for something like that. Will that be the case in April? I don't know, no one knows.
I think the election, I'm not as worried about as I am there, but that's the only concern I have, is the early voting piece.
I got a hunch you're gonna...
And then, and then 60% of them.
Yeah.
And the state can be the sixth, but like, you still gotta get it on your car. You still gotta sign that form, and that's not 60.
There's a lot of...
There's a lot of them right now.
And you gotta sign in. You're taking pens. You're just gonna, you're gonna, it'll slow the process down, the question.
Okay, we've got Monday at 6. I'm gonna do a vote. Is that all right?
Okay, we'll post it, and we'll be certain of that.
I'm gonna make a motion on this, we're just gonna take a vote, it's a general vote, and it's the way the vote goes. The way we're gonna do it. Okay, and if you would like to leave?
You can't do that.
You can't hold.
Mary, you can't take a general vote.
Okay, um, well, how, how are we gonna do this, Don?
You have to...
Short term, let's start at 8:00.
Well, no, what you're gonna do is this. Y'all said, there's a consensus, clear consensus, that we want to meet Monday night at 6, when the school board meets, to make a decision on it. So, we'll post it, and you'll vote that night. You'll have another discussion I send, and you'll vote that night. But there's no action to be taken.
I, I understand that, but my question is, how do we, do I just do it? I'll do it if, if, if that's what...
Y'all have told me to schedule a meeting from Monday night at 6 o'clock.
Who's y'all?
Board. But the consensus, there seems to be a consensus that there's a desire to do that.
But are we gonna set, are we gonna set a meeting at the site down the board's day? The school board? Should we meet Tuesday?
I know that's Y'all's, Y'all's desire, I'll be known.
Which one do you want, Tuesday and Monday?
There's nothing wrong with meeting at 6 o'clock. We meet the same ones.
We're too busy.
We're not there yet.
Okay, Monday, 6 o'clock.
Here.
I'll undertake a motion, for the chair.
Motion is...
I'm sorry, sir. I'm gonna be here all night, so I get a sec, please. I'm gonna go...
Second.
I'm a little old, man.